...sat around a lot, didn't have a lot of time for that. But that's why we have a safe community, is because we attack things headlong. Listen, young people that make horrible decisions, I've got a first offender program, I've sent thousands of people through. Most of those young people I never see again. Environmental court, the people with 12 and a half inch weeds instead of 12 inch weeds in their yard are seen on a different day than the DWI offenders and those that have beat up their neighbors or whatever else. Those are seen on different days because they're different crimes. I started Traffic Arrangement Day because people were being clogged up in the middle of traffic trials with just an insurance card to show me that their insurance was valid the day that, uh, the day they were stopped. Lots of good programs have started, I'm gonna continue with good programs. Um, in discussions, actually with Sandoval County DWI Program, last week about some of the other things that they can offer our, uh, our offenders. When people are convicted, we're always looking for a better choice, we're always looking for something that will work for that particular individual. And this is what I've been doing for the last eight years and I'll continue to do the same thing, reaching out and finding better solutions for our crime problems while keeping government at bay, making sure that the city does prove their case against each one of us when you're charged with a crime.
Okay, we're gonna continue with the same thing and it looks like the candidates had already started, so, um, the question is, is crime is a growing problem in Albuquerque, everyone's seen that. We've got a lot of questions around that on the three by five cards as well as the, uh, on Facebook when we posted that out. What are some of the different ways you, in your role, can keep Rio Rancho as the safest city and not allow it to go downhill and with increased crime? Thank you.
First, I'd like to say that it is great that we can all live here in the safest city in New Mexico, and it is one of the reasons I live here and why so many people I know choose to live here. Crime is something that we can tackle on so many levels. First, we need to give our public safety personnel the tools they need to succeed. And, of course, that means equipment, but I'm also talking about, I also wanna mention, because I'm a big technology person, we have to make sure that they have the technology they, they need to be able to analyze what's going on in our community and focus their efforts and be successful on how they're focusing those efforts. You know, and then I think we need to develop programs to prevent crime. Um, I think the city could lead the way by hiring local high school students. I think of so many times I hear about criminals and they're actually kids getting themselves into trouble and, and getting into a cycle that they can't get out of, and I think if we give kids jobs, internship, an opportunity to learn life skills, stay out of trouble, and develop a respect for their community, it will go a long way in improving the safety in our community. I would like to see that program expanded to that businesses across Rio Rancho work with high schools, to give kids a chance in our community. And I think we also need a form of public safety task force. We need to address problems before they get too bad. And I think that this task force could look at some of the causes of crime and whether it's through educational initiatives, job training, or just finding the ability to connect people who are at risk with the resources they need to succeed, we need to identify those solutions early on and get them started now. Finally, I'm gonna go big picture, because I think the best way that we can make our community safe is through improving our economic conditions. If people are able to find well-paying jobs, can support themselves and their families with dignity, they don't need to turn to a life of crime, they can become functional members of our society, be proud to live here. Thank you.
Okay, next up, same question, Paul Hallen.
Well, it goes without saying that our, uh, public safety people need the best equipment, they need the support of the community, um, and by the way, just in case anybody's wondering, I am in support of the bond for public safety. Um, I think that's a great way. There's a little thing out there called the broken window syndrome, where if you find, if there's one broken window, within a few days there will be another broken window, within a few days there'll be another broken window, before you know it, you've got vandalism and everything everywhere. Um, I think having community standards for appearance is huge when it comes to, uh, deterring crime. I think making sure that graffiti is taken care of, I think making sure that we have fewer boarded up businesses in our city, and making sure that if there are open areas that have suddenly become open, that, that there is some sort of, of neighborhood watch setup or crime, uh, enforcement set up for those areas. And I think you know what I'm talking about for those poor people that live around the golf course right now. Um, the city has done a great job when it comes to, uh, taking care of crime. I mean, two murders last year, that's for a city of 100,000 people, that's unheard of. Uh, but we do have a lot of property crime in Rio Rancho. There are still a lot of break-ins, we still have more than our fair share of auto theft, and I think we need to support the police. I think we need more community involvement. I think as people know about stuff, as people meet their neighbors, as people get involved, like you guys are getting involved here tonight, I think together we can help make our community a safer place. Um, yes, it needs to be funded and I have some ideas about doing that, a little bit more than I, we can go into tonight, but I would very much like, uh, your support in helping our, uh, local police do their job, and, and together we can make Rio Rancho an even safer place than it is now. Thank you.
Next up, we have Andrea Pena.
Thank you. Well, I haven't yet had the opportunity to meet with someone from the police union. I am, uh, aware of the fact that they are understaffed by as many as 12 officers at any given time, that sometimes at nighttime between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM, there are five police officers on the street, period, in Rio Rancho. It's pretty disturbing. Sounds like they need some funding, and we need to make sure that we have continued revenue streams, not just from bonds, but thinking of other ways that we can help grow our police department in order to make pay competitive, in order to keep the officers that we have here now and attached officers, whether they're new recruits or from other police departments and law enforcements around the state and other states. Cars need replacing, that's a definite fact. But, I also have another idea, and it goes kind of along the lines with what Jennifer was saying, it kind of starts with the young people. I do understand that we have one service aide who's kind of like on an internship program, only one. Why can't we build that up with, uh, youth, ladies and gentlemen, who are under the age of 21, who want to be police officer, be in law enforcement, and do those type of internship positions where they are learning directly from police officers themselves, the job, and giving them a kind of value to their life and leading them in the right direction. Um, another facet of public safety are our firefighters, who I did actually have the pleasure of meeting someone from the firefighter union, and they have their own needs as well. We have rigs, we have ladder trucks and ambulances that have over 100,000 miles on them. That's dangerous for our city, that's dangerous for our constituents. So, again, we need to work and have a consistent revenue stream, not just with bonds, but discussing other ways with the mayor, with the city council, with the city manager, working with the public, working with the firefighters and the police to ensure that we stay the safest city in New Mexico and the best place to live. Thank you.
Next, we'll have the municipal judge, Ramon Lantoya.
I'm not a believer in turnstile justice. There must be guidelines in place and offenders must have trials or punishments, are not excessive to some and lenient to others. Rio Rancho is not and will not be a safe place to be a criminal. For every case that comes before me, a comprehensive and thorough understanding of the facts will be considered. If the offender is found guilty, they can expect a fine, jail time, and some form of supervision, community service, or completion of another program. Every offense, of course, carries its own penalties, and depending on the offense and the discretion provided to me, that offender will have options. Criminals, especially criminals at a misdemeanor level, do not fear jail or fines. We cannot simply rely on 90-day jail sentences and $100 fines. We have the, we have to address the root of the problem, whatever that may be for that particular offender. Those are the problem, those are the problems, uh, programs I wanna create. There are however, a time and a place for harsh sentences. Albuquerque is regionally famous for its repeat offenders, in large part due to the catch and release policy. If you're a repeat offender in my courtroom, having completed a program, you can expect the maximum allowable sentence.
So, we talked a little bit about Albuquerque, we talked a little bit about our crime and the problems that we face here. One of the, one of the things that I've done to, kinda head things off in the past, is acting, actually kind of like a preemptive strike. When people are arrested on, and we talk a lot about DWIs, you know, we hear, and some of the most passionate things are the barking dogs and the weeds growing in people's yards, and the person that moved into a home that three or four things built on that property are not permitted. But DWIs are what get us killed, right? They kill our families, and so I take those the most seriously of anything that I, that I hear, and so I talk a lot about the DWIs. People who come into court for their initial, uh, appearance, um, and have a prior something to do with DWI are required to wear an ankle bracelet. The ankle bracelet monitors the alcohol in their system. You might have seen something about this, but it's so important for me to know that that person who has been out drinking and driving is now sober, at least until trial. Sometimes a head start is all a person needs if they've got an alcohol issue, and I'm very proud of this preemptive strike, I call it, um, and where, where this is headed. We've gotta keep, uh, gotta keep the officers on the road, do everything we can to limit the time if they're in court, we've done many things to do to, to, uh, limit the time the police officers are in court, so they can be out on the roads. Um, you know, we've got a great staff, they schedule as best they can, the officers during the times that are beneficial to them, and limit the amount of time that they are in court. Uh, but we've gotta, we've gotta look at the, the overall crime problem. I, I can't solve the homicide problem in, in Rio Rancho, I hear petty misdemeanors through third DWIs, um, but here's what I can do and what I have done for the last 11 years, is treat people fairly, punish where necessary, get treatment for people that need treatment. Um, you know, this whole bonding nightmare, I'd like to talk to you for about 15 minutes about the bonding nightmare, because people who shouldn't be in jail are sitting in jail because the Supreme Court rules have made that the case, and people had a guy living with eight shoplifting charges, two in the same day. Um, yeah, catch and release, because the Supreme Court rules have said they have to be released. So the frustration, I'm sure you're hearing it in my voice, um, we're trying to do the best thing for, for this community, um, and we're gonna work to make those rules more tenable for, for, for our community.
Hello. So what do we need, um, to fix these problems that we have? First of all, I, I agree with Councilor Flor, we are in the safest city in the state, and we have the best first responders in the state, in my personal opinion, in the nation. And I'm really proud to work with you. Some of the things that we do need, um, we do need more police officers. We have hired some, we need more. Why do we need more police officers? Well, even though we are the safest, uh, city, one of the ways to keep us safe is to have a lot of visible police on our roads. Yes, sometimes that means doing traffic stops, but when you drive up 528 and you see three or four police officers sitting there, you are sending a message to people from Albuquerque, don't come up here or you will be caught. So we need to help them have more officers, and we need to help them have the programs so that they can be on the streets, so that they can be visible and they can send a message by their presence, stay out of Rio Rancho, you are not welcome here. So, another way to keep doing that is, as we've talked about before, or I've talked about before, our community. We're safe because of you, you who volunteered, you who pay attention, you who called in when something looks suspicious. And really, the Rio Rancho Police Department shares a decidedly different relationship with our community than it, they do in Albuquerque. We have great love and respect for Rio Rancho Police Department. We have a bond that is not duplicated in Albuquerque or very many other places. And it's important to keep that relationship going. That comes from reaching out to the community, because the more that they get to know you and that you get to know them, the more you trust them. And when you trust them, you'll call if you see something suspicious, right? And so one, if, one of the reasons we're safer is because our people do call, because we do trust our police officers. In the past two years, we have increased programs, like Coffee with a Cop, Movies with a Cop, right here in this theater, Citizens Police Academy, the PIES, all the things that we're doing, the police are reaching out even more than before, we already had a good relationship, to make that better, to make our community stronger, and that comes from working together. Yes, of course, we need to do everything we can to get them what they need. That, and I have done that over the years, I have voted for raises, I have fought for raises, and I am the only person sitting up here that has been endorsed by the police and the fire in my first term, and now in my second term. And as a veteran, I understand what it's like to put your life on the line, I understand what it's like to be a family at home worrying, and I will promise you that I will make sure they have everything that they can to do their jobs and keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, next up, here's the next question, and it's, uh, one that we have received multiple from the crowd that wanted this question asked, so we're gonna go ahead and run with it. It is, small business has been key to building Rio Rancho's sense of community. Rio Rancho receives a majority of its revenue, tax revenue, from small businesses and property taxes, but from the small business standpoint, what would you propose to do to support small business in our community and help grow gross receipts tax to build our revenue base?
Wow. Thank you. As a small businessman, I could use up my three minutes and plus tons more going on about the challenges of small businesses, not just in Rio Rancho, but the challenges of small business in general. What you don't need are the city making it worse. I will say that, now, I started my business here in Rio Rancho 10 years ago. Um, actually, I started here in Rio Rancho eight years ago. My first two years, there was no space appropriate in Rio Rancho, and so I actually started in Albuquerque. So I've gotten to go through two different, starting a business in Albuquerque and starting a business in Rio Rancho, and they are very, very different experiences, and I would like to make it easier for the businesses in Rio Rancho to get started. And one of the things that I think that we need to do is, and we've been talking about public-private, uh, cooperation here, right now when you go to, uh, to get your city license, you go in there and you pay your fees, and they'll ask you questions about your business as to what kind of licensure do you need, what kind of inspections do you need, and then you're pretty much on your own. Now, there are wonderful organizations out there that can help small businesses, that if I weren't involved with the Chamber, I wouldn't know about, well, the Chamber being one of them, but there's a great organization called West that can help small businesses with things like funding. Um, New Mexico Business, uh, blah, 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 I'm going blank on it, sorry, I'm having a brain freeze. Um, uh, thank you, uh, the Employment, New Mexico Business, whatever. Um, I'm going blank, could you help me out here, Jerry? Just look at that one. Thank you, Network Workforce Solutions, thank you, I just couldn't remember that. But they have wonderful programs that will work with businesses and cooperate. Um, people need to know about these things. Axiom is another wonderful organization that can help you get funded. And as small businesses come into Rio Rancho, making them aware of the resources that they have available is not something that the city really has been involved in a lot and needs to get more involved in. We need to make them feel welcome when they're coming here, we need to make them feel like, wow, we're really excited that you're investing your life and your savings and everything in Rio Rancho, and we're gonna do everything we can as a city to help you. And I think that's what we need to be going forward, so, like I was, wow, how do I wrap that up? I don't know, I was kinda up there. Anyway, um, making Rio Rancho more business friendly and bringing them up and increasing our gross receipts. And by the way, if we increased our gross receipts without increasing the percentage, a lot of these problems that we're having, these roads, these police, fire things, less of a problem, we have enough money to pay for them. Thank you.
I'm not a small business owner myself, but my father is. He's owned a pool cleaning business in Sandy Hill, California for 37 years, that's how old I am. And I remember him walking, driving off to work every day and just seeing him bust his butt to get money for us to raise us to be great kids, my sister and I. And, you know, I, I kinda wanna piggyback on to what Mr. Hall was saying, in that we need to streamline processes in order for small businesses to be successful here in Rio Rancho. We need to have a liaison within City Hall in order to help small business owners who are new, who want information, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, to help coordinate, to make it easier for those people to bring their business here, to start their business, and to be more successful, instead of them having to go search for it themselves. In terms of gross receipts tax, I think that's gonna take a little bit of a bigger picture type thing, working with public-private partnerships in order to bring, not just small, but medium and large businesses here in Rio Rancho, because once we have career jobs here in Rio Rancho, we will have more property development, we will have more people living here, we will have more people buying here, we'll have less people going down the hill, more people coming up the hill, if we can have these types of businesses here, bringing different types of retail. You know why we don't have a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods? We don't have the population. We need to build our population, and one way to do that is to attract business. Thank you so much.
For the sake of the question, I'm gonna allow the, uh, both judge, municipal judge candidates to bypass on that question. So next up is Don Robinson. Not quite a match for what you guys think.
Okay, so, as a small business in this, uh, as a small business owner, um, this has been one of my passions, you know, in my first term and will continue to be in my second term. Look, before I ever ran for office, I was a founder of Buy Rio Rancho, because I know how important it is to support our local small businesses. And, and that doesn't say something about who I am, I've put in my time and my heart into that Kiwanis Club for many, many years, even before I was in office. Um, after I got into office, the first month, I formed a small business coalition, and we began meeting weekly with business owners, small business owners in our city, outside of the council, and, and gave them a voice, that, so that they could say, hey, what, these are the things that are hard for us, these are the obstacles that we need to overcome, and what can, you know, you do as a legislator to try to work on those things? So I've brought forward, uh, measures to make things more business friendly, but let's be honest, we have a long way to go. Um, some of the things that I've been wanting, planning on working on in my second term, we need to reprioritize with city staff, small business. There's far too much focus on large businesses, I've been saying it for years. Really proud of SCA because they also are helping small businesses grow and not just going after the big guys. We need to look at, uh, having a small business ambassador, gosh, this is one of my other answers, but we'll keep going, to liaison between the businesses and the city and to make the process easier. We need to streamline our procurement code, we need to streamline, uh, which is gonna be a bear, but we have to tackle it and get in there. We're gonna have to fix our inspection process. There are so many things that, details, procedures, rules, that must be changed if we are actually going to be a free market and a business-friendly city, especially for small businesses. And it comes from reprioritization, and it comes from a commitment of your counselor, your mayor, but also the other councils up there. One of the things that should, that you'll know is that it's nice to have dreams and say you wanna do something, but you also have to be able to collaborate, work together, and I have proven that I can do that to get things passed. And that's what you have to do to fix some of the problems that businesses are facing. And we need to work together as a community to help them come in and give us jobs and give us places to shop and make our lives better. Thank you.
Small business, something very near and dear to my heart. My husband is a small business owner. When we moved out here in 2006, he started his business from the loft in our house in Northern Meadows, and over the course of these 12 years, he's been able to grow his business and move to an office that's in my district on Southern Boulevard, and he's an employer in this city now. I've seen the opportunity this city can offer small businesses, and I wanna make sure that opportunity is there for anyone who wants to start a business, grow a business, expand a business. So, some of the things that I think we can do to help small businesses, and I will say it over and over again, because I, I've been saying it for 18 months at the city council, we need to improve our technology. When you go to apply for a business license, you have to print out a form and email it. Why can't we fill out a form online and get all of our inspections coordinated in an online form? Many other cities do this, it's something that we can do, we just need to prioritize. Also, I work a lot with people who fix up houses, I work a lot with contractors, because one of my side projects is in the real estate business, I like to fix up dilapidated houses, make them beautiful again. So, I talk with a lot of contractors who come to the city to get their permits, and there's frustration, and we need to overcome that frustration, make the process easier so that projects don't get stalled, money doesn't get wasted, and people can move on with their lives and start making money and start growing this city. So, and the final thing I think we need to do is create a service-oriented atmosphere. I think this, we could go from building inspectors all the way on up to the highest levels of our government. So when someone comes in and says, how do I get permission to open a restaurant? How do I find out what I need for a roofing permit? So whoever they're talking to says, hey, I either know the answer, or I will get that answer for you right away. And we need that attitude so that people want to do business in our city.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, next up, Andrea Padilla. So, um, I said Andrea.
It's just one of those names.
Right? Okay, so next up is, we'll take two minutes for this answer here. The question is, is every one of you is running for a four-year term? And in what we'd like to hear, and we've gotten this question a few times from the audience as well, is Rio Rancho is moving from the third largest city, anticipation, into the second largest city, and, um, taking a leadership role in the state of New Mexico. Your term is over four years, but what over those four years will you do to prepare Rio Rancho for the next five to 10 years from now?
Well, five years from now, I hope to see Rio Rancho having a much higher rate of road and water infrastructure projects going on, so that we can have a safe place to drive, that we can have a safe place to bring in businesses. That way, our, our business people who wanna come in, whether they're small or big, look at Rio Rancho and they say, hey, this place looks nice, we don't have roads where they're breaking our cars or are not functional for our businesses. I also would like to see more utilization of public-private partnerships like we had with the Park Above, that's a very successful public-private partnership, and that's a great place in our community. Why shouldn't we be doing more of those things? Maybe we can use it to help revitalize the golf course area, maybe we can help it to bring glass recycling to Rio Rancho because we don't have it, that's really important. I really hope to be based upon those, uh, public-private partnerships here in Rio Rancho in the next five years. What I hope to see the most in the next five years is more regular citizens coming into the fold of public civic life. Rio Rancho voters, I'll let you know right now, the incumbent who I'm running against, she won on 950 votes, she, there's 950 votes total, I'm sorry, she won on 500 votes. There's 9,000 registered voters in my district. We need to get people out there participating, knowing what the issues are, hearing what they need to know about what's going on in the city. I plan to do that, and I hope to see that next five years. So, five years from now, I wanna see our city a little less fractured in the four corners that we live in, coming together, having great places like Whole Foods and Trader Joe's for us to go to, having it there, here in Rio Rancho, when people go congregate, see a concert.
a concert, do a wine fest, do family activities. I want to see new schools for Rio Rancho with a growing population that I hope that we have. I want to see Rio Rancho continue to be the best and safest city to live in, work, start and grow a business, or raise a family. Thank you.
Five to 10 years from now, I want to see us be, still stay the safest city. I have an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old, and I'm tired of feeling that they're not safe to walk across the street to go to school. My 11-year-old, we all know, is gonna be here in a few years, old enough to drive. Five years is gonna be here before you know it. I want our roads to be the safest. I don't want to have to worry about what's out there when it comes time for that. And I don't want that for your family and your children as well. We have a strong police department here. Everybody that knows that you come up here, they're gonna get you if you mess around. We don't speed up here, we don't steal, we don't do things like that. And I believe that that's because of our strong presence with our police department. If I'm elected, I want to match their effort. Because it's not just due to them, it's due to you. With the policies and procedures I'd like, I'm sorry, yeah, with the policies and procedures I'd like to implement, the court will be known to be fair, effective, and have efficient operations.
I kind of have a vision for five and 10 years from now. The first priority has to be something that I started discussing in 2007. Farmington has two judges and some alternates. Los Cruces has two judges and some alternates. Santa Fe has a judge and a whole bunch of alternate judges. We've got to start thinking big city. There's 100,000 people in this city. We've got to stop acting like a small town, even though it is. I can't believe sometimes some of the things that happen that make us look like Mayberry sometimes. And that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing. But we have to start thinking like a larger city, and we have to have a second judge. We have to get the police department and the court separated. It was a great idea in 1980 or 1990 when we moved into that building. It was a great idea because it was a deal. We got a great deal on the building. But at some point in time, people walk in and they see, oh, police, and the court, oh, man, are they colluding? So, great work. So we really have to look at second judge separating the court, getting the court. And I don't want to be far. I love having the police officers there. When the stuff hits the fan, I really like having police officers there to protect me. But we really need to think long-term in thinking of growing the court. We have a small staff. Santa Fe has almost twice the staff I have.